Yes, here.
I'm Crosby.
Yes.
John Cummins.
Here.
Nigel Deneen. Nigel Deneen. Nigel Deneen. Not getting Nigel, so I'll come back to him. Lawrence, I'm here myself. Pascal Pascual.
Here, yeah.
John Kill.
Here, yes.
Donald Kilduff.
Yes, I'm here, Lawrence.
Orla Laid. Orla Laid. Yes. Marty McDermott.
Yes.
Michael Mulligan. Michael Mulligan is there, I can see him. On audio off your speaker mic. Michael, you're on silent, but that's okay, you're there anyway. Joe Murphy. I mean, Joe Murphy. Come back to Joe, John Nocton.
Here, Lawrence.
Kathleen Jenner.
And she'll.
Anthony Waldron.
Yes, here.
Tony Ward. Tony Ward.
Yeah, can you hear me there?
Yeah, Tony, yeah, that's good, that's fine, thanks. Now, back to Nigel Deneen. Just don't have any record of Nigel yet. Joe Murphy. Okay, well, if they join us, they would probably make themselves known to us. We're also joined by the Director of Services and by Patricia Bowen and the Chief Executive. So, just a couple of housekeeping works. This meeting must conclude in two hours. So that is a time frame we have to stick to because of Covid. And this meeting is the first meeting we're having on Zoom, our teams. So from that point of view, we're having any teething difficulties. If you should ask, want to raise a question or respond to an issue, do so by raising the hand on the screen and that way it'll come up clearly to me. Otherwise, I may not see you raising your hand and only speak when you're called in to speak. And I think that they are the main points I want to bring to your attention at this stage. And so I'll hand on to item number one on the agenda, which is the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes. The first one is for the plenary meeting of the 21st of the 12th, 2020. Can I have a proposal for the minutes of the 21st of the 12th?
I propose that.
I second it.
Proposed by John Cummins, seconded by Kathleen Jenner. The second set of minutes is a special meeting of the 1st to the 2nd, 2021, to deal with amendment to the bylaws. Have a proposal for that.
I propose that.
Marty McDermott proposes.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tom Crosby.
Yep.
Okay. Matters arising from either set of minutes?
Can I, can I check, can I just check, please?
Kathleen Jenner first, so, okay.
Can I just check the special meeting, who was in attendance to propose and second that meeting?
That's the same issue I have. I don't think that anyone that wasn't in attendance can propose or second that meeting.
Correct.
Hi, Tony Ward here, I'd propose it.
Tony Ward is now proposing.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Our granddaughter.
Or the seconding, so that's just a slight amendment, and that's quite right, Kathleen. If you weren't at the meeting, you couldn't propose or second it, indeed, yeah. Okay, any further items arising from the, matters arising from the two meetings? No? In that case, I'll move on to item number three, which is the Management Report, and your Board of, December Management Report of January, circulated. Not sure if the Chief Executive wants to add anything to it. Anybody else want to add anything to it? No, okay, that goes on, yeah, okay. Item number four. I want to move on to item number four, which is an update on Loch Funchen. And just by way of introduction to that, I want to, I'm sure you're all aware, very major, major problems we have out in Loch Funchen, which in the first instance is quite close to myself, as it is to many other councillors. An issue that arose initially in December 2015 and has continued to rise incrementally since that to now at a level where it is, has already flooded one house. If it wasn't for the work of Roscommon County Council and the local community, at least three other houses will be flooded. We have lost at least two farmyards and there were at least two more under, under the level of the lake, which are now being kept out by pumping. This is an issue that has gone from an average level of 600 acres to 1,200 acres now and rising continually. And just the frightening thing about this is that the capacity of the lake empty is not there anymore. And before it finds a natural spill, in other words, it finds some other outlet other than the one that now it left rise another 15 foot. So there's hundreds of acres at stake. There were farms and families under severe mental and financial torture because of this. And I suppose our only aim should be to find a solution to this and in the meantime, to do everything that's possible to ensure that families are protected for as long as possible. So I'll hand you over without further ado to the Chief Executive who wants to introduce the issue.
Kehilak and members, you're all aware at this stage, the deteriorating circumstances that are in Loch Funchen and the continuous hardship being experienced by the community in and around Loch Funchen and the last few weeks and months, the community really have seen lands and properties and roads and been flooded and everything that's precious to them, really, everything that they worked for. And a situation which has, over the years, deteriorated significantly and defies, defies the research that told us that this would be of a cyclical nature. And as it would, as it always did, return to some states of equilibrium in terms of reduced flood levels, but that hasn't happened. And in the meantime, we're all familiar with what's out there and I can assure everyone that I'm absolutely familiar with every aspect of it. I'm familiar with how the flood has increased steadily. I have, of course, been out there and I'm aware of individual circumstances. And I am aware of and and feel the stress being experienced by the communities because this is a very stressful period and so today we have an update and can I say, Kehilak and councillors, if only everyone knew how I would wish that I could make this go away. If only everyone knew how. I really want life to return as it was when the flood would come and go as nature intended it to. But I'm afraid I don't have any magic wand and but I do feel that it's absolutely vital that the community and new members are, have a clear understanding of the situation, what it is we're going to do and what it is that others are going to help us with. So with that, I'm going to ask the Director of Services for Infrastructure, Shane Turner, to give an update and this update will be circulated to all members in the morning. Sorry, this evening. It will then be circulated to Arachta's members in the morning and of course we will be dropping, we will be writing to the many people who have, by post, we will be writing them, attaching the report and and it's important that we do that and we'll continue to do that. So, Kehilak, I'm going to ask on your behalf, the Director, Shane Turner, to present the report to you and elected members, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Executive and Kehilak. I want to echo the sentiments of the Chief Executive, in particular, expressing the empathy we have with those who are badly affected around this lake and the unprecedented events that have occurred. The rainfall of recent times and indeed the rainfall of the last few years have raised the flood level of the lock to unprecedented, unpredictable levels, causing havoc to the daily lives of the communities affected. These flood levels have been stressful, causing worry and concern and at times have caused sleepless nights. The farming community have seen vast areas of their land flooded and financial expectations from farming activity almost destroyed in some instances. The Roscommon County Council have stood side by side with the community, raising roads and preventing floodwater from reaching the living area of any home. Whilst the situation remains under control, the possibility that the existing, as of the 21st of February 2021, maximum recorded flood level may be exceeded is a serious concern. The local authority will continue with existing preventative measures which have limitations. Further interventions that are outside the remit of the local authority may be required. Recent weeks have seen various plans and proposals mooted regarding pumping. However, from a hydraulics perspective, in terms of sheer volume, lift and distance, together with logistical, operational, environmental, risk assessment and other considerations, pumping is not an option. To add to an already difficult situation, this is designated as a special area of conservation and any moves to interfere with the natural hydrology could set back the progress of an engineered solution, which will require environmental management measures to support that, the natural hydrology. I appreciate that this is somewhat unpalatable and extremely difficult for the local community. The situation at Loch Funchen will require the continuous intervention and monitoring of the council for quite some time, as unfortunately, there is no remedy other than that already identified. The recent unwelcome intervention of the minister has seen all stakeholders give their attention to Roscommon County Council to assist in the design and planning process. Discussions have already taken place between Roscommon County Council, Office of Public Works, National Parks and Wildlife, Department of Agriculture and Geological Survey Ireland. Consequently, progress has now been made with regard to funding, designing and advancing to planning a significant capital project to resolve the problem at Loch Funchen. The identified solution is not something that can be rushed or accelerated through a process. That demands the careful consideration, appropriate data collection and a perfected planning application that meets all of the planning requirements. The identified solution will respect engineering principles to drain off excess levels from the lake as they occur and distribute these waters through a chain of man-made and natural systems at a rate which will not impact on a receiving location, thus allowing the lake to maintain its traditional winter flood levels without affecting homes and public roads or the conservation objectives of the site. This is a European nature 2000 site under the habitats directive with a very sensitive natural environment where vegetation and wildlife may be negatively affected by any construction project. The nature of this project is such that it may impact on this designated special area of conservation and as such is subject to a part 10 planning process, which is required to go directly to onboard Planala for decision. Estimated timelines of the planning and design work necessary to progress the capital scheme to planning submission is likely to be up to 24 months as extensive surveys and assessments will be required. Some surveys are only legitimate during particular seasons and other surveys could be sensitive to levels of the lake, thus high waters delaying their commencement. In advance of this, Roscommon County Council has actively undertaken protective measures in various locations around the lake, including in Bala, Lisfaleam and Ard Mullen for both roads and households at significant cost this winter. These measures have included localized pumping, a total of seven pumps being managed and operated by Roscommon County Council in the Bala area. A number of roads have been substantially raised, including the LP 2005, the LT 20051, the LS 7731 and the L 77320. Installation of protective flood barriers, rock armour and supports have also been put in various locations. This work has reclaimed ground, which would have been otherwise lost to the lake this winter. Further works will be assessed during the summer season when it is hoped that water levels will have reduced considerably. Roscommon County Council is committed to achieving a valid solution. However, it must be noted that this solution will not happen overnight as a robust planning submission must be prepared to secure a successful outcome from onboard Planala. Thank you, Kehilak.
Thank you very much for that and I suppose that sets the scene for the discussion we're going to have this evening. I can't stress strongly enough though the desperate situation that we have with the lake, 1.54 metres higher today than it was this day last year and more alarmingly, 550 millimetres higher than it ever was before. The problem we have is the lake is rising, time is not on our side and with a lot of work being done to date, we have succeeded in losing one house. But there were at least two others now that are under the level of the lake and two more on the edge of being under the level of the lake. And I suppose the magnitude of what we have been doing to date, currently, on one side of the road, the lake is and on the other side, the other part of the lake, but it is now 400 metres lower than the lake itself. So a lot of work is going on in a fire brigade situation. So the critical thing is that we get a solution and get it fast before the entire village is destroyed because only last night, I was looking at an article from Wales, which showed the lost village of Trewarden in Wales. There, a whole village had to leave because Liverpool County Council decided that we're going to build a reservoir and the families had to move out and that was extremely traumatic. The last thing I want is for my village to be destroyed and a solution to come after. So time is on our side and it's critical. I'm going to up it up to the floor. I see a lot of hands up. The first one is councillor Ivan Connerton. Ivan.
Thank you, Kehilak. Can you hear me there?
Turn up your volume a little bit.
Can you hear me?
You're okay, yeah.
One second. Now, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're going well now.
Yeah, thank you very much. Firstly, Kehilak, just to say to yourself and to the community in Rahara, well done on your works to date and thank you for keeping us informed at municipal and plenary meetings with levels and all for Loch Funchen over the past number of years. Unfortunately, we've come to this situation knowing the problem in 2016. And I suppose a few questions that I have, because I know the time is limited for our speaking, rather than going through rehashing what has been said already. And the situation is, I'm very annoyed that the works haven't progressed further and we're at a situation where the horse has bolted and now we're trying to come up with a solution. I believe this should have been done at an earlier date. A few questions I have. Firstly, I want to thank yourself and the Chief Executive for informing all of the councillors. I had asked by email that all councillors would be informed of all developments with Loch Funchen. And while we're not getting news, we'd like to hear today. At least it's a step in the right direction for the long-term solution. But in relation to the short-term solution and the short-term remedy until the long-term solution is sought, I have a few questions in relation to that. I suppose firstly, the Minister, coming back, Minister O'Donovan, in his letter or email to ourselves and to the County Council, saying that the responsibility is with Roscommon County Council for the Turlock. I was always, we're always been told in the past that turlocks were the responsibility of the Office of Public Works. And now we're being told that this is the responsibility of Roscommon County Council. I'd like to get a reply on that and maybe a letter of clarification will be required to the Minister so that we don't have any other situations like Loch Funchen for our other turlocks in the county. One not down the road from myself here in Carlisle between Athlegan and Roscommon, who was in a similar situation, but not in a situation like the people in Loch Funchen are today. And I suppose I asked at a meeting in September, a municipal meeting, what the costs of monies that were spent to date. No doubt that is exceptionally higher since, thankfully, the OPW has said in their letter that they will cover some of the works. But I think we need to know as elected representatives, all of the monies that has been expediated by Roscommon County Council up until the date of the Office of Public Works letter and from the date of the Office of Public Works for all the good works that have been done. And in fairness to the council and the outdoor staff in particular, I have to compliment the works that have been done despite me believing that it's not going far enough. And I believe what we need here from the reply from the Director of Services, I believe we need to get an expert in on pumping. And there's a guy there down in Kilkenny, Matty Walsh of MW Hire, who's the highest, one of the biggest in Europe. I think we need to have a special Zoom meeting, let it be for the councillors in the, at Low Municipal Area alone or for the overall council, whichever, to just to talk about an expert on pumping because if this situation, the long-term measures aren't brought in for two to three years, I believe it will be too late. And if we can get some temporary pumping of water out of Loch Funchen in the short term, I believe that would be of major benefit. And all of the constraints that have been mentioned, I believe they can be overcome with the stakeholders, in particular National Parks of My Life and the fisheries and many others. I believe it can be done if there's a willingness from Roscommon County Council to do it. I understand you can't keep raising roads because there's a safety issue. Very much agree with you on that. But the situation that we're at at the moment, I'm just very concerned that the water levels are going to rise and will be too late whom we have gone to the planning process with onboard Planala and the situation will be just too late then. And it's, we need to be put forward thinking in future if there's serious issues. We knew about this in 2016. We raised it at every meeting possible. And in fairness, Kehilak, you led the case on that, it being your neighbourhood and we supported you and everything on that. But unfortunately, the good works of Roscommon County Council is going to come undone unless we can get a temporary pumping measure in, until such time as the permanent measure is in place. And I'm calling on Roscommon County Council to do that. And what I have calculated, one pump could bring the Loch Funchen down one inch in 13 days. So that would bring it down five foot in, over a two-year period. I know it would be substantial, that's only one pump. It could be 15 foot if you had three pumps. And that Matty Walsh, they can pump water four kilometres, I have spoken to them. So there is solutions, it can be done if there's a willingness. River Shannon is 100 foot lower than Loch Funchen is today. And I think while I welcome all the progress that has been done, unfortunately, it might be at the last, and a bit too late. But it might not be too late if we take the seriousness of this matter and get in temporary solution with the pumping measures over the next number of months and see how things go. Maybe the summer will be good, but we can't go on maybe for that community. And all I say is, I hope that we can get some positive answers to them questions because, look, we have a responsibility as public representatives to look after our constituents and this is the worst situation I've ever seen, this is the only area under pressure from flooding in County Roscommon. And we just need to look after that community and be sure that the works are done, thank you.
Thanks, Ivan. Councillor John, John Kill.
Councillor John Kill. Thanks, Kehilak, and thanks for the presentation. Can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yes, we're here fine.
Yeah. Thanks, Kehilak. Yeah, it's a very serious situation that the residents and the farming community are facing down Loch Funchen. And I've heard what the Chief Executive has to say and indeed what my councillor colleague, councillor Carson has said yourself in relation to it. We have to have an open and honest and frank discussion in relation to this very issue and there's going to have to be proposals put forward that can meet the needs of the farming community and residents in that area. If a solution can't be found to bring the lands that are lost back into the equation, we have to look at farm re-location schemes. And I'd be proposing that a letter would go from Roscommon County Council to the Department of Agriculture, whichever department would be overseeing it with regard to putting in place a scheme for farm relocation. Because as you've mentioned, Kehilak, there is quite a large number of acres of land that are affected by the flooding thus far. So, you know, with the best will in the world whilst the overflow pipe that's been proposed may very well address the issue and hopefully will in the longer term to avoid further residents or agricultural lands being lost to the, what essentially is becoming a lake. We have to ensure that the lands that have been affected thus far and that might never come back into use will get adequate compensation under farm relocation scheme. And that's what I'm proposing, I would hope that I would have support across the chamber in that respect. And equally so, an adequate and suitable, an adequate and suitable home relocation scheme as part of that. Now, those are things that should be working in tandem with the other measures so that if we get to a point as what councillor Carson is referring to, if the pumping solution isn't viable, so that at that point in time down the road, if it isn't viable, that we're not starting out on a process of trying to put in place measures for those that are affected, this should be happening as we're speaking. And I know that the home relocation has been part of the discussion thus far. But as councillor Carson has correctly highlighted, this is an issue that has been going on for some considerable period of time. There's been a lot of discussion both at council level and from the sitting, the councillors elected and the executive and other state agencies. And we have been very critical of reports that have come out in relation to, I won't get into the details of that now, it has been aired quite a bit. But there's been a lot of concern that has been raised. So those are two proposals that I want to see happening. At the same time, I do believe that we need to be reassessing the entire situation as to the cause as to why the water isn't escaping. And I think we might be losing sight in that respect up to this, at this point in time. We need to get back to looking at that, in my view. And it's something that I'm willing to continue exploring, I am exploring it myself. I too have spoken with Matty Walsh, councillor Carson has alluded to. And if he has a proposal that is something that will address the issue well and good, I would certainly hope that that would be possible. I'm not convinced that that's possible, but I certainly would hope that that would be the case. But we have to ensure that the other processes are put in place so that we're not dealing with a long drawn-out process at a later stage for people who are affected by this. And we have to come to the, I have to accept as part of the discussion, Kehilak, and thanks for letting me continue briefly. We have to look at the possibility that we might not be able to address the issue and that the overflow pipe will, when it's put in, that there will be lands that are lost. So we have to start dealing with that now, not later.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Kehilak. I would appeal to councillors to be a little more brief because we're just going to run out of time. Next speaker is councillor John Nocton.
Thanks, Kehilak. Look, first of all, I think the families and directly affected with houses and the landowners are feeling a deep sense of frustration that this issue has been going on for so long and we haven't been in a position to deal with it. We received a report and we passed it on to the OPW and I think we have to be critical of them that they didn't act on that, there was a solution there. If it had been acted on and we progressed it, we'd be in a significantly better position moving forward now. And both, look, we are where we are. I think there has to be acknowledgement of the work that the council have done over the last two months to ensure that them fam, those families aren't flooded at the moment and had to leave their homes. There's a significant amount of lands and shades that would be flooded at this point only for the measures that Roscommon County Council have put in place as temporary solutions to the difficult situation they're facing there. And I think there has been significant investment and measures taken there and I think we have to acknowledge that. I think at this stage, we're progressing and at least it's moving forward to looking at a solution. And I take it Shane, from what you've said there today, that we have all the different bodies on board with finding a solution to this and moving it forward to the planning process with the view to getting a result on it. I think everyone needs to work together on this. If there are interim solutions which councillor Connerton has proposed, I think there'll be difficulties there myself with the environmental aspects of it and restrictions and so forth. And they are going to create difficulties in relation to pumping. But any solution or interim measure that can be put in place to alleviate this situation should be looked at. And, look, I'd just like to acknowledge the work of the council and the difficulties of the families and that we work with them and keep them informed going forward of what we're proposing to do and the progress we're making, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now I want to hand back to Eugene, Chief Executive.
Thank you, Kehilak. Excuse me. First of all, any all costs associations up to date. And the all costs associations up to date with works that we've been doing to help the community at Loch Fwinchina. I expect everyone them to be recovered. So including costs going forward, which are going to be significant and including all elements of the work, I expect all of them to be. To be returned. And indeed, that would have been our experience in the past whereby we would have dealt with. Adverse weather conditions, we would have always have costs recovered. And I don't expect this to be any different in actual fact. There will be no difficulty in relation to that. So, and members of course, as costs are tabulated. It will be public information and it'll be made available to you in the first instance. In relation to what we did in the past in relation to progressing the report initially. When the flooding came to our attention, you know, the OPW assessed the report. With the analysis of existing information and information, the records generated in Loch Fwinchina are recent enough. And the assessment was done with the information ahead. So, but things have moved on and. Now that there's more information, we know that the flooding is going to continue. As of today, as the Kehir look has said, it's five hundred and fifty millimetre higher than it was in twenty sixteen. And, you know. Unless we get a good summer and we might. But I'm not relying on that. The situation could possibly deteriorate even further. I think councillor Kieran in particular has brought this to a conversation that we need to have in terms of. What might happen in for the next year or two. Indeed, of and the letter, I think, is a good idea of sending that to the departments in relation to house relocation. And indeed of interventions to be put in for the farming community who are suffering greatly. But and and maybe it might be the case that in such time as the pipe is put in, that there will be a couple of years of whereby. There'll be a couple of years whereby existing or a couple of existing properties would have to be big cases. And indeed, members, you know that there have been two relocations already. And unfortunately, I'm sure one family in particular would have much preferred to stay where they were. In relation to pumping, I don't know many more times I can say, Kehir look, and members. There is no pumping option available. And I think we need to deal with the facts of the situation. And progressing this solution. Councillor Norton, I can, all of the parties have already been around the table. And we will save significant time in relation to their input and they've been very, very helpful. And like all of you and then Kehir look, not least of all yourselves, they are and they want to do the right thing. But there is huge legislation behind the designation of. Especially area of conservation and it can be bypassed. And the quickest way to progressing a solid application to onboard Planola. Is doing it precisely and accurately. And I know that's going to be very frustrating for people, but there is no way around that. And, you know, we have to be clear on that road ahead and for the next couple of years, which may be quite difficult. But the one thing that Loch Fwinchina has told us over the years is that there's no way of predicting what's going to happen. So, we will be there monitoring it continuously and we have others with us that are also monitoring it remotely. And we will be there with yourselves to help out the community. Kehir look, I'll leave with that for the time being.
Thank you very much, Kehir look, our chief executive. Now, first of all, apologies because I was watching my monitor as to put up their hands. And I'm now told that they're not coming in the right order. So I want to now call councillor Ward, councillor Gildoff and councillor Fitzmaurice in that order. Councillor Ward first. Councillor Ward. Councillor Ward, you're on mute.
Sit now.
Yeah, you're fine. I'll go ahead. Yeah, fine.
Thanks very much, Kehir. I just want to thank Roscommon County Council since two thousand and fifteen. The work they have done there and their efforts. And a huge thank you to the outdoor staff for Roscommon County Council and the work they have done there to try and contain. The water levels at Loch Fwinchina. And I have to say that I said it back in two thousand and sixteen. I called, you know, first meeting in relation to the issue. I raised the issue of an overflow pipe that should have been put in place. And what we have happened in the meantime is that Loch Fwinchina, I said at that time, will continue to rise. And continue to keep rising. It has to be looked at in the context that there is five. There's five drains water flowing from five outlets into Loch Fwinchina. And that's on a long going basis. And there is no issue with that. The only issue is now you have a situation where. The lake is rising all the time. There is one outlet at Loch Fwinchina and only one outlet for the water. And that has been blocked for the last six or seven years. And that's the main issue there in relation to try and get the funding. To do work there. And if an overflow pipe isn't put in, the situation is bad now. But I can guarantee you, and it doesn't give me any pleasure to say this, that it's going to get worse and worse. Because the water out of Loch Fwinchina will back up into those five drains that I have alluded to. I would like to say too that I'm proposing here that an overflow pipe will be put in place at Loch Fwinchina. And if it can be speeded, while you're talking about twenty four months or thirty months. I would say to the chief executive of Roscommon County Council and the director. To fast forward that as soon as possible. I have something that happened recently there. I was born and raised on the brink of Loch Fwinchina. I understand Loch Fwinchina. I'm not surprised at what has happened due to the outlet being blocked. But I'm very disappointed with the department, the people there, the number of farmers that has lost funding. Through area aid and European funding. And that inspections would be carried out round, you know. December time of the year to see can they cut those farmers more funding. So over the last four or five years, the farm income has dropped for all the farmers in this area. They have paid a huge, huge price, not alone as the European payment dropped. But also the amount of livestock that can carry on their lands. That has dropped substantially. So I would say it's Roscommon County Council and I wouldn't rule out councillor Ivan Carleton's idea or any idea. I think we're all in this together and I hope we're working together to do whatever we can. So there should be nothing ruled out. But I'm making a proposal here today that this would be fast forward to try and get the plan of permission. If you have to go to board Planola, go to board Planola, try and get it out tender and try and get the work done. And I don't know what you're going to do in the meantime because it's a major, major issue. And even while I would support relocation for people that wants to relocate. But I have never met anyone that wants to leave their own area or their own home, that want to stay in their own home. But I think that this is a major issue and I want to thank all the councillors for their support.
George Tony.
Thank you.
Next one is councillor Donald Gildoff. And that's all the members of South West Commingden. Donald.
Thanks, Kehir. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, here you're fine.
Thanks again, Kehir look, for letting me in. Look, I suppose we all know that the situation is desperate up there. Around Loch Fwinchina. And I want to firstly commend the efforts of the council in recent weeks defending properties. And doing the best they can with the dire situation that is there. And I want to also commend the CEO's letter to the minister, which seems to have jolted the action that we all need. Which is for all of the stakeholders and all of the national agencies to get on board and try to bring about a permanent solution up there. I suppose there's a frustration in all of this for us as elected members in that we were presented with a report. Going back, going back a number of months or over a year ago now. And when the report was presented to us, I think every member in the room knew that it lacked credibility. And it lacked credibility for two main reasons, fair as I'm concerned. And one of them was. One of the reasons was that the report used historical rainfall data to conclude minimal future risk of flooding. And everyone in Roscommon County Council knows, all of the staff and all of the members know that climate change is a reality. And any analysis should have relied upon forecast data, not historical rainfall data. The events of twenty fifteen, sixteen, the winter may have been an outlier in the last one hundred years, but it wasn't an outlier. In the next ten years, because here we are five years later and we have a worse situation than before. So it's a frustration that a report can be presented to elected representatives. And they know that it lacks credibility and yet there's, it seems there's nothing they can do about it. I mean, in the Athlone Municipal, we asked the OPW to come and engage with us on the subject. Because we knew what was coming. All of us knew in the Athlone Municipal what was coming this winter. We all knew it. And, you know, it's not acceptable that we were told that the OPW doesn't have the resources to attend municipal meetings. So while I suppose I commend the council and all the efforts that are being made. It is a frustration for us as elected representatives that it takes a situation to get to this tired state before action can be taken. I also would like to ask, I put forward a motion last November, calling on the National Parks and Wildlife Service to carry out a review. Of the SAC status at the lake. And I'm just wondering, has there been any response to that motion, I suppose? A resolution of the council, received a resolution of the council at the time. And has there been any response from National Parks and Wildlife? Because as the CEO has stated and we're all aware, the SAC status at the lake. Does present a lot of difficulties in trying to do anything with it in terms of the level of bureaucracy and. I suppose analysis that has to go with actually carrying out any work or doing any temporary works, et cetera. So I just wonder, has there been any response to that? And I'd like to see a situation. Yeah, okay. I respect the time constraints. Yeah.
Okay, I call councillor Pascal Fitzmaurice.
Thank you, Kehir look. And as you know, I went up to visit Loch Fwinchina a number of weeks ago and with yourself, I met you there. And I suppose the friend Shane Tierney, I suppose the first thing that hit me at Loch Fwinchina was to see quite a number of trees that were. About a hundred years old and all of them were dead. So they lived for a hundred years without any huge amounts of water. At the roots of them and suddenly they have all been killed by this floodwater over the last five or six years. So clearly, it's not a natural phenomenon. And I think Loch Fwinchina is very, very similar to the Turlock and Castle Plunkett. Where there's lots of water coming into the Turlock, but only in underground swallow holes to allow the water to leave that Turlock. So it presents a huge problem. So I think if there is a pipe that has to come out of Loch Fwinchina. We need to realise that it must take out more water than all of the drains that are flowing into the Turlock in order to make it work. In the case of Castle Plunkett, we done some drainage work over in Ballantuba where we thought that there was a link to the Turlock in Castle Plunkett. And after that drainage work was done, we found that the level in the Turlock and Castle Plunkett dropped by three feet. So I think it is something that if there are rivers to the south of the Loch Fwinchina and they're flowing away from it. I think it is worth investigating to see if they were drained and if they were cleared to see would that help alleviate the level. But also in relation to pumping, I think we have to realise the vastness of it. And just on a rough calculation, I think in order to take one inch off the lake, you'd be talking fifty thousand cubes of water just to. To remove one inch of it. So you have to realise, using something like pumping, you're going to have to use a huge amount of pumps. And I don't think it would work unfortunately. So one inch of water would be fifty thousand cubes alone. And that wouldn't make much of a dent, I'm afraid, in Loch Fwinchina. So I'll just leave it at that. And thank you, Lawrence, for meeting me down there. And I do empathise with the people down there. It is a terrible situation you're in, but you have my full support for anything that will help the situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thanks for coming up to look at it. Many of you have called already. And I think you've all been shocked at what you saw and anybody who hasn't come yet is welcome to come at any time to meet the locals and see the suffering they're going through. I'll hand you back to the CEO, Eugene.
Yes. Kehir look, and members, just to pick up on a few of the issues raised. Look, we'll save every week and every month that we can in relation to progressing the Part Ten. And already, the very fact that ministers intervene has brought everyone around the table. And here to four in a normal Part Ten process, that would have awaited for the planning application to be submitted. And then the inputs of the various organisations would be sourced, but they're around the table now. And the complexity and the legalities and the legislation behind a designation is huge. But it doesn't mean, and I think that Kehir look has made this point in several occasions, that. The designation, we're gone beyond that and we're now destroying further areas in around the lake. And so it has, if you like, to a certain degree, worked against itself. So the planning process will be accelerated, of course it will, and whatever we can be do. But unfortunately, the legislation has to be followed. There is no, there is no other way of doing this. Other than through the process. And if that process isn't perfect, we'll delay it. And look, I think too that, you know, we're going to have to look as others to help us out here. In terms of, you know, it may mean, it may, but we don't know. But, you know, I wouldn't like to see it happening. And but, you know, there are a couple of houses that are below the flood level at the moment. And we will do everything we can. And I'm quite confident that, you know, we can certainly. Go quite a bit in continuing to protect us. And we'll be doing everything we can. And look, there's a huge frustration there amongst everyone, not least of all the people concerned. And they're the ones who are suffering every day. They're the ones that have to sleep at night worrying is the water going to be in the door in the morning. They're the ones that sees every day. And I'm, and we are, everyone of us involved here, we're very conscious of that. We're going to do everything in our power. But we cannot do what's impossible. And, you know, but that doesn't mean we'll do everything that we can. And we will do that and we will save whatever time. And I do think now that all of the elected members should really keep the pressure on everyone, you know, to give this its urgent attention. You know, we're all aware of situations where the burp and all it can take a lot of time to deal with an application. So we need to keep this in the public eye, you know, we need to get the hardship being experienced by the people. You know, that needs to be continuously highlighted. And can I say that everyone in that is affected? There are, you know, they're, 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 they're really nice people. I don't say this in a patronising way. But they are really nice people that are just trying to get on with their lives and they want to be able to do that in a way that they have no risk of flooding around. And why wouldn't? And we, I absolutely acknowledge that. And I also acknowledge their frustration. And can I assure you, members, and you might tell them when you get a chance, that I am aware of this. And I am aware that they are suffering distress and I'm very conscious of that in terms of progressing it along. In terms of all solutions there, look at the, we have one of the best companies consultants in Ireland. In terms of all solutions there, look at the, or or we have the, we have one of the best companies consultants in in Ireland looking at this, one of the best recognised as such by all of departments. And they will be looking at all options. And can I assure you, councillors? Um that outside of this forum, that if 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 their ideas brought to my attention, well, I I will listen to them and I want you to assure you of that and bring it to their attention. So whatever we can do, but it's going to be frustrating for for a time to come. In relation to the letter we wrote to the National Parks and Wildlife. Um but the fact that they're on the table, we can we can look at that, but the designation of of the SAC is 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 goes at a much higher level. But we we have them around the table and, you know, we can talk to them about that and and how it's not so much the designation of it, it's to keep it at that designated area. And that's going to be the problem and but we can work with them on that and with others. I'll leave her that, Kehir Look, for the time being. Thank you.
Okay, there are quite a number of speakers who want to speak. Yes, I call councillor Valu Byrne, Liam Callaghan, Tom Crosby, Valu Byrne first. Valerie.
Okay, thank you very much, Kehir Look. And look, I don't want to go repeating all the stuff that has kind of happened, but when you go up there and see what has happened and, you know, too many kind of different people involved. It's a bit like the River Shannon. Too many have an input into what's going to be done there. And I think the same thing has happened in Loch Funchina. You have other bodies that um have to be consulted and have to be brought on board. Now, that's about the only bit of good news I think, I suppose, we've heard today is that those different groups are on board. And uh I just want to repeat what the county manager said there, because that's what I intended saying. And that is that, you know, those people go to bed at night and they don't know what is the situation is going to be in the morning. And this rain promised for the next couple of days and how far up is that going to put us? But saying that it's going to be two years down the the line, I think we need to get it pushed much quicker. I don't know what exactly or how we do that. I mean, you see, it's 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 legislation and it has to go through. But I suppose when you call it spade a spade, it's red tape. And these people are suffering and there is a duty of care uh from every one of us in the council. And I think everybody has been supportive. And to talk to those people up there and they are so appreciative of what the council have done for them and are kind of keeping them and keeping the water out from their door and relocating them, I'm not sure. I know if it's me, I wouldn't like to be relocated. It it's my home, it's where I'm earning my living and it's what I earn my living with. And if it comes to all, of course, they will be looked after. But I think we should try and push everything forward as quick as we can and let these people be able to to sleep at night in their beds without worrying about what's going to come up. I mean, when you think it's gone from, you know, six hundred acres to twelve hundred acres. And, you know, think of all the farm people that are involved in that, so many of them, six hundred acres extra. And there was three three islands out on it and they are gone now. All you see is maybe a bit of a top of a tree. And uh somebody else spoke there about the trees that are dead. Along the road, you can see all the trees dying. And surely the habitat people and those people in that that are in charge of those things should be concerned about that. But I think our main concern is people and that's where our uh our allegiance lies with them and trying to push everything forward for them as best we can. So I won't say anymore or take up any more time. Just thank you for giving me the time.
Thanks very much, councillor Valerie, councillor Liam Callaghan.
Thank you, chairman, and I I I fully emphasise too with the people in Loch Funchina. And um as Pascal Fitzmaurice said here earlier, that we experienced a similar situation in Castle Plunkett some years ago. And to be honest, while there was drainage works done and there was remedial works done, the people still are living on a knife edge because they're never quite sure when these waters will reemerge and uh what kind of flooding will take place, albeit that a lot of the homes are safe in Castle Plunkett area, not like Loch Funchina. But um to find out lasting solutions is the is the big issue here. Um I think to tell the people that it's going to be thirty months or thirty six months before there will be any definite decision, I think that would be very frustrating and worrying. And certainly people will have to look at their homes and their farms and their their livelihoods. Because three years watching water or the possibility of water washing in your door, you just cannot mentally or physically, you could not put up with that. And especially in a farming community where you have animals and livestock, I think the the burden would be would be much greater. So I do hope that there is a lasting solution found. Um I would love to think that there should be something more immediate found within the thirty thirty months window. Because um as I said earlier, we're talking about SACs, definitely an SAC area, what it was meant to do twenty years ago and what's going on there now is totally in parallel to what special areas of conservation are about. So everything has changed up there, whatever the the cause is or whatever the reasons. And I suppose to find a solution and an outline solution. And I would say that the county council shouldn't be left with any outstanding expense at this stage. Um I noticed in Castle Plunkett when the flooding came, there was promises of money, the works were held up for times. And we're now back at a stage where we're down trying to grapple for money to finish off some of the roads there from the municipal area funds and from the the local roads funding. So that's the situation. It should be a job loss, everything priced in and the council and the people should not be left short. And I, that's where I finished. Thank you, Lawrence, and thank you all.
Thank you very much, councillor. Callahan, councillor Tom.
Uh thank you, Kehir Look. Um well, like the other councillors there, there's no doubt eh we can see that this is a a serious crisis in our county where you have a community eh eh with the threat of a constant threat of flooding and in eh serious situation where they could lose their homes. I seen a few years back eh where a situation eh quite similar eh but in this eh in this occasion, it was in Rings End in Dublin. And eh there was, I remember at the time, there was eh all the delays with getting the solution. Eh but eh suddenly the 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 government and the Taoiseach landed out. And I remember and I can clearly see him eh with his eh water right up to above his wellies eh standing eh for the photographers. And nearly overnight at that time, as far as I know, they were able to introduce eh eh emergency legislation to eh deal with the engineering solution that they came up with. And along with that, there was great support given to the community. And it was only a small area in Rings End that was affected at the time. But obviously eh the government today is failing and they're leaving the local authority to a great extent, struggling to try and do their best. I indeed eh I'm quite certain that, like, waiting, you know, for eh eh a timeframe of eh anything up to two years at least to have a planning application processed through Onboard Planola. Now, I think if this situation occurred in any other country eh that there would be eh a means of 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 eh at least introducing emergency legislation to address it. And I can't in the world think why that it can take such a a period. We've all experienced what has happened with Onboard Planola. And again, it's only eh in most cases, it's eh eh some individual that comes down, maybe wouldn't be at all familiar with the area, would come down and make a report and depend on a small number on the board to make a decision. Like, we have the people here on the ground, the county council that's out there eh day after day. They know the situation and this should be enough to process the planning application and fast track this eh so that the people in this village, eh eh a whole community, they're under serious threat. Something needs to be done. And I think our Arroctus members, I don't hear very much out of them. And I think it's about time now that they started bringing this situation to the floor of eh eh the Dáil and Senate to address it.
Okay.
I think it's chairman, sorry, I I I I don't think I've overstayed my time. I don't know why you're
By a by a small bit, I have to tell you, and you're getting
I I I I've been watching the time with others, so with all respect. Eh but eh what I'm saying is, I think that this should be fast tracked through the system. I read with great interest and I compliment the CEO for the letter written to the department, to the minister. And I think eh if they, our Arroctus members were to make this a very serious and an emergency issue, I'm quite sure that eh what happened in Ring Rings End could certainly happen in Rahara in this in this area, in our county. Anyhow, eh thank you, chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Crosby, councillor John Cummins.
Thank you, Chair. Well, like the previous speakers, and I've listened intently to the discussions here so far, it is an appalling situation that be be falls the people in South Ruscommon around Loch Funchina. We had a similar situation here in the Boyle area about four, five years ago, but nothing remotely on the scale of what's happening in Loch Funchina. And I think it's time that the situation was addressed. I think the way the council are going about it at the moment is the proper way to go about it. Get all the agencies on board, get a part Part Ten planning application together, get a common agreement on it from the executive, from all councillors and the the relevant agencies. Put it to Onboard Planola and try and get a successful outcome as quick as possible. I think what the CEO said about Onboard Planola was very relevant there a few minutes ago because we in the North of the county have had experience in the past of decisions going from Port Port Planola and months and months and months passing before a decision finally came back. I think it's imperative on everyone to lobby whoever they can to ensure that when this application goes to Onboard Planola, that it is detected as expeditiously as possible so that a solution can be found. Just in relation to the discussion that took place there in relation to pumping, we had turlocks here in North Ruscommon four, five years ago where it was similar flooding. Nothing on the scale of South Ruscommon, I might add. The turlocks were, in one instance, was only ten acres. And a pumping situation was put in place to try and alleviate the flooding. A huge operation took place. It was barely able to keep the water at the level it was at. It did slow up the process a small bit, but it wasn't able to alleviate it. So I think whoever has said that the pumping situation won't work is right from the experience we found here on the ground in North Ruscommon. I think to go back to what councillor John Q said, it's an important situation that should be looked at as well. That parallel to this process being planned out with Onboard Planola for for this um pipe to be put in, a parallel situation should be arrived at where these people could be compensated for their losses, be relocated in farms and relocated in houses. But I would say one thing in relation to relocation, we had one house here in North Ruscommon and it took possibly a hundred people and the every agency of the state to keep the water out of the house. At one stage, the water was over a metre higher outside than the floor level inside. These people applied to be relocated. They were refused their relocation because the water did not enter the house. So we have to take that in board, that regulations such as that and people who make regulations such as that should be looked at seriously. Because the the effort that was put in to ensure that that house wasn't flooded for these people. And then when they were willing, after being persuaded to relocate, they were told they wouldn't be relocated, they wouldn't be compensated because the water didn't actually come into the house. So I support everything that was said here today, but to me, the most important thing is unity of purpose by everybody to ensure that a a successful application, Part Ten, goes on board Planola. And when it reaches there, that is dealt with as expeditiously as possible. Thank you, chairman.
Okay, councillor Michael Mulligan. Councillor Mulligan. Councillor Mulligan isn't tuned in just now, so I'll go to councillor Walden.
Hello, hello.
Oh, he's back, he's back. Yeah, councillor Mulligan, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, yeah.
Uh thank you, Kehir Look. Um uh first of all, I have to compliment Ruscommon County Council and the work they have done down in Loch Funchina. It's very, very frustrating, it's very, very hard, but it's a lot worse on the the people that are living there. It's very frustrating for the families and very frustrating for the local councillors. To me, it looks like the pumping isn't working and bureaucracy bureaucracy has gone mad. To think that this thing has gone on since two thousand and sixteen and nothing has been done about it, it's absolutely shameful. Now, everything has been planned, has been tried in the in the in 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 the line of pumping, uh sandbagging and all that, but there's one thing that hasn't been tried. And I look at it up here in our own area and I suppose we're all talking from our own point of views and we all have our own little little bits of stories to tell. But I look at the lake, Loch Linn and Fithley. And Loch Linn, if people mightn't know, it's an artificial lake and it's built on a turla. And when the turla goes down and it's controlled by a pump, it goes into Loch Fith, which is about six miles away. And that can be done, but to do that, you'd have to bore uh councillor Pascal Fitzmaurice mentioned earlier on there, where there was a blockage, a a blockage in Loch Funchina for going into the turlock up up there. And that has to be freed. If it's not freed, it can be bored into the earth's crust. Now, everything else has been tried, board and hasn't been tried. So regardless of environment, regardless of a lot of things, and all these things have to be forgotten about. I think we'll, you'll have to take a shortcut for these people. These people cannot waste another two years of misery and misfortune. It it they have to be helped out this year. And hopefully, and I pray that the 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 lake levels goes down so that they can board. And if they don't, if if they can't, put a bore hole down through it and down through the earth's crust. And you might have to go down two hundred feet or maybe three hundred feet, but these boys with the machines can do that. And let the water down there and you don't have to go down to that same bore hole, but one near it. And that will alleviate a lot of water because if if you look at a genealogy report of County Ruscommon, you'll see that that Ruscommon, the amount of water that's under Ruscommon is one of the few few places in the country that has pure, pure water. Uh and I know we're getting a lot of our water from the surface, but underground water, we can get it from there. But we got bored into that and you alleviate it. It might sound crazy, but everything else has been tried, so why not try that? Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Mulligan, councillor Tony Waldron.
Now, thank you very much, Kehir Look, and thanks for showing me around Loch Funchina recently. And when the chief executive says that they're nice people up there, they genuinely are nice people. I've known many, many, many people up there for years and years, had nothing but good things to say about them. It's good that there seems to be a solution here to the problem and that's very good. But it must be faster acted some way if it means special legislation by the government or whatever, they should intervene. And I would greatly welcome that if that if that can be done. The other thing, Kehir Look, with regards to air aid, nobody, but nobody should lose out on air aid because this problem isn't of their making. I propose in here today that Ruscommon County Council send a letter to the Minister for Agriculture and find a way around this. Thank you, Kehir Look.
Chairperson, your speaker is off.
Off.
I get, I get. Thank you very much. I want to second that proposal, councillor Waldron's. Nobody should be losing air aid because a solution is in sight. I wanted, last speaker today is councillor Orla Leaden.
Thanks, Kehir Look, and really just to say eh as another of the councillors and just to say, I think all of the councillors in Ruscommon County Council support the Part Eight. And clearly, the impact on families' lives in the Loch Funchina area and livelihoods is devastating and um a worry day in and day out and really what there needs to be, and I think it's been said by others, it's been said by everyone. But I think we need to remain unified in it, that um I suppose through the through the the work of the chief executive and yourself, Kehir Look, you have succeeded in getting um the minister to intervene and getting all its stakeholders around the table. And I think it's important now that they are around the table, that we keep them there and that the process is um fast tracked. And that the recent, I suppose, the idea that it could take twenty four months is absolutely terrifying. It's far too long. Um now that everybody is talking, eh I think we just need to have clear timelines. And I think that would be really helpful for the community to know what is going to be happening over the coming weeks and months to come to a successful outcome. Um and, you know, I I cannot see why it should take that long because um as councillor Kilduff said, the the report that was done before was based on past water levels, not on future forecasts. Um and it's clear that climate change is a reality and the department know that as well. So I would just urge, I suppose, as the final speaker today, that there would be that this would be expediated. And I know that the chief executive, the Kehir Look and all of the members want that to happen. And I think um everything that can And I think everything that can happen and to bring on board the Arachthus members to ensure that this is brought to a successful conclusion.
Thank you very much, Orla. And just a final point I want to make myself, there's been a lot of talk about relocation. And relocation of a house is probably a possibility, but it is extremely difficult to relocate a farmyard. And as someone who lives very close to the situation and knows all the farmers there, I can't understand how you would attempt to relocate a farmyard in the situation we're in. So relocation will not be at all simple. And I would see that as a severe loss of any success if we have to do that. Not saying we mightn't have to do, but we shouldn't underestimate the challenge of it. The other point I'd want to make is that by the time we get a solution to this, it's entirely possible that the entire village of Balla will be cut in two. And therefore, we'll have the Sewers Canal going down to the middle of Balla, which would decimate the entire village. I think we need to understand the magnitude of it. I'll hand you back to the chief executive who will make some responses.
Cahill, I have questions not answered.
Well, okay, Councillor Conraton. Major questions again, okay?
Yes, but one was a proposal that we get an expert in, Matty Walsh, and not just for Loch Funchuna, but I think if we had it for all of County Ruscommon into the future, an expert in relation to pumping. And we've heard about pumping in other locations in Ruscommon. What magnitude of pumping, what methods of pumping was it? We need an expert to come in and to give us, let be for Loch Funchuna or future Loch Funchunas, that we get an expert to come in and give a presentation to us as councillors. I'm making that proposal here, let it be by Zoom or whatever. Let the person be from abroad or let it be Matty Walsh or whoever is an expert in the field to answer questions at a future date. And number two, I asked in relation to future, the turlocks in the future, is it the responsibility of the OPW or Ruscommon County Council? Or do we need clarity from the OPW? And just supposed to finish up, and thanks for letting me in, Cahill, is in relation to Councillor Crosby. And he mentioned about the farmer Tishuk Bertie Hearn and he was in his wellies and we all clearly recall it in the front of Irish Independent. It's a hard pity, in 2016, we had plenty of representation in government that didn't get put on the pair of wellies or get their wellies wet. If they did, we mightn't have the situation that we're in today from Arachthus members in our own constituency.
Okay, just before I hand back to the chief executive, Marty McDermott wants to come in, he has been in already. And John Kew has a short question. Marty McDermott first.
Thank you, Cahill. Look, I just want to support and show my solidarity to all our fellow councillors, especially in that particular area in Loch Funchuna, which is a very, very sad situation. And my heart just really goes out to them and that's just what I want to say about that situation. And I know you're all working very hard as the county councillor and I can mean you. And all I can just say is that you have my full and utter support.
Thanks very much for that. Now, I see Nigel Dunneen wants to make a comment as well. Nigel?
Thank you, Cahill. Thank you very much. Sorry, I was just, I was trying to double job as I say, apologies.
A bit brief now, that'd be good.
Very brief, yeah. What I just, I would like to say, I just, I think we really have to fast-track this. Two years is too long. I think whatever legislation we need to do, emergency legislation, basically put in place, we need to put that in place because these people have suffered for the last five years and we're saying now they're going to suffer another two more years. That's seven years. And that's way, way too long to get this situation under control. So I think it's very important that we, as elected members, push this. Whatever we need to do to push it with the council, absolutely. But make sure that we push it to make sure that this isn't going to take two years. And I think if everyone is around the table, then why should it take two years? And I think that, you know, the council have done a very good job in the last number of weeks to make sure these people's homes aren't flooded. But we need to really, really step up here now and, you know, show real leadership here to make sure that it won't take two years and that the people will not suffer any longer. So I think it's very important everyone is together in this and unified, absolutely. But two years is too long and we need to fast-track this and get this to onboard panel as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Okay. And finally, John Kew with a brief comment because we're way over time, as you can imagine.
Yeah, thanks, Cahill. Look, I had a proposal there in relation to a letter going to the department in relation to farm relocation scheme. And I'm conscious, of course, of what you're after saying yourself, Cahill, in relation to, how do you relocate a farmyard? Well, that's the reason why you need to have a farm relocation scheme put in place and clear parameters put in place to ensure that if the situation doesn't improve and their lands and farmyards are affected, that there is compensation put in place for those whose livelihoods are being affected by this and who are struggling to keep things going, just to keep the water at bay. So, you know, that's why we have to have that and the time for putting the proposal is now to ensure that that can be done in tandem with the other proposals. And I completely agree with what other speakers have said about fast-tracking the process. It should be fast-tracked if that's possible. I certainly do whatever I can. And I consult with my Arachthus, my party's Arachthus members in that respect to try and get that fast-tracked if it is possible. But it is good to see that there is progress, but I'm looking for a second or in relation to, looking to have that agreed. Thanks.
Okay, I'll hand the chief executive.
Thank you, Cahill, and I'll be as brief as I can. Cahill and members, there is no pumping solution. There is no pumping solution, right? In relation to the OPW, the OPW are charged with flooding. They are the responsible agent for when it comes to flooding issue. But the planning of infrastructure has always been a matter for the local authority and you're all familiar with this. In relation to this particular piece of infrastructure, which hopefully will go in in as soon as possible, this large length of pipe, because of the area of designation that's involved, it is outside of the gifts of the local authority, if you like, namely yourselves in terms of party. So it has to be go to onboard panel because the appropriate assessments would dictate that. In relation to, I think it's, you know, we need to be looking at what other options might be down the road, but we're quite a bit from that and certainly not this year, you know. But we can't have a situation whereby, in an effort, we can't have a situation whereby in the local authority being successful keeping black floods, that we end up with a situation where people are not entitled or not. I don't get the relief that they would get if we weren't there. So we need to be looking into that and we need to be looking at some form of mechanism. And but there is no immediate fear of that, can I say that? And but that's not to say that we need to be thinking about other mechanisms around that. Can I assure every one of you that I have heard all of what you've said? And I'm not going to ignore any of it because there are all valuable concerns and input. And over the coming weeks and months, I will be considering all of these things. And indeed, there may be other items and topics that you want me to consider and I will do that. And in the meantime, if there was a fast-track process, I'd have done this, we'll do it, but there isn't, you know. And the fastest way we can do this is we're getting people around the table and perfecting an application form that'll survive any challenge that we might get. So we will be doing that, Cahill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. I suppose that's where we are with regard to.
Can I just come in for a half a second?
Okay, Councillor Orla, go ahead, yeah.
Just, thanks very much for letting me back in. Just, I put forward a proposal there that as soon as possible that an overflow pipe will be installed at Loch Funchuna. And I think it's, as we all agree, this is very, very urgent. While it mightn't be urgent, when I mentioned it back in 2016, the situation has become very urgent. So I'd be appealing for support. And just on one point there, I put a motion before at Lone MD in relation to compensation for members of the farming community. Now, I didn't hear any word back in relation to that motion, but I have a question down at Lone West MD in relation to compensation for farmers. But I had a motion down for the December meeting because, as I stated, Cahill, and as you would understand, members of the farming community has lost substantial amount of earnings and income and in relation to their own farming activities, but also by way of funding from Europe. They have lost a substantial amount of funding. And in relation to the SAC and the habitats that's on Loch Funchuna, they are completely, completely destroyed. To my horror, they're completely destroyed. And I'd have to say, and I'll finish on this, that the members of the farming community, over my lifetime, always looked after Loch Funchuna and the surrounding area absolutely 110%. And the reason for the outlet is completely blocked and it's not because of the farmers of the area. But I have been informed that it was a load of stuff that was dropped there on the shores of the lake that actually blocked the outlet at Loch Funchuna.
Okay, Councillor Orla, thank you very much for that. Chairperson, I want a second, Councillor. Okay, I just want a second, Councillor Orla's proposal. And it's second of a Councillor Orla's proposal is exactly what we all want to do and will be doing anyway. We appreciate that. I would also tell Councillor Orla that Minister McConlogue has been lobbied with regard to area aid payments at this stage to seek a stay on any penalties that will incur in Loch Funchun in the absence of a solution. Councillor Kew has said he wants a second that proposal. Now we're getting on a bit. Councillor John Ockton, very briefly.
Just a proposal that Councillor Kew made. I'll second that proposal and I think it's something not just for Loch Funchuna and I don't know if it's the solution there because there might be no alternatives for those landowners. But in general, around the country, there are situations where landowners get into difficult positions with sheds and so forth, flooding and land. And we need a national solution that's there on a parliament basis. But I will support Councillor Kew's proposal to second it, to bring it forward to the department.
Okay, John, we're going way over time, I have to say, and we have a lot of items on the agenda yet. I think we give this a good hearing.
Cahill, I have a proposal there that I'm looking for a second.
Yes, I second the proposal.
Councillor Nigel Dene has seconded Councillor Conraton's proposal.
Thank you, Cahill.
Seconded at this stage now. The situation is, as has been outlined, you're all councillors are fully supportive of it. We all know the pain and some of us know the pain more than others because of our location. Every effort is being made in the longer picture and we must be open to all possibilities that has some chance of working to try and take remedial action in the short term as well. So with that, I think I want to close this section and move on to the next.
Cahill, sorry to interrupt. Our proposals and seconded, proposing seconded, they're all agreed by all members.
Proposals all agreed, all agreed.
Cahill, before, before.
Chief Executive wants to come in before you go any further. Okay, Chief.
Cahill.
Yes.
You may want to consider a section 159 to instruct me to do that, to incur expense that would be, in my opinion, a waste of money. Because I will not be securing, there is no pumping solution. So members, familiarise yourself with section 159 of the Act and you can advise Cahill accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, so we will leave that proposal. And if under a section 159 at the next meeting you come back with it, we'll have to discuss it there. Okay?
Cahill, are the other proposals agreed, Councillor Orla's and mine?
Councillor Orla's and Councillor Waldron's and yours. All agreed? Great. Leave it at that. Thank you very much. On to the next item. Now, with your permission, because we have gone way over time, I want to move on to the item with regard to broadband. So I invite in the National, the NBI presentation coming from Ruscommon. We have with us today, we have our, first of all, we have Anne-Marie Johnson, who's with us, our own person here, we have John Levin and Amy, Damien Fitzgibbons and Damien Dunneen. So I'll hand over to whoever is leading off on that broadband proposals, okay? Okay, John, you're very welcome. Off you go, yeah?
Yeah, sorry, I thought Anne-Marie was going to go first. So Cahill, councillors, Chief Executive, Eugene and Anne-Marie, thank you for the time. I know you're probably behind time, so I'll go quick. I've got a slide deck. We'll briefly, I suppose, stop on the main points. We'll try and get through it in about 10 or 15 minutes and then I'm open for questions. So I'll just share my screen now. Can everybody see that?
That's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so my name is Joe Levin. I'm the Chief Commercial Officer with the National Broadband Ireland, NBI. I've been involved in the programme or the tender since 2017. So I was part of the original bid team and as we moved over and ramped up the company. So again, the agenda, I think if the slides haven't gone out to you, they will or they'll be available to yourselves afterwards. So I'll quickly go through, we'll land on Ruscommon, which I'm sure is the area that most people are interested in. This slide is very important. The programme itself has been talked about since 2015, when the tender process started. And the whole purpose of the National Broadband Plan is to make sure that high-speed broadband is available to every premises and every individual in the country. And they did that, the Department of Communications did that by initially identifying who already had access to high-speed broadband and then identify who's left, who's the remaining premises or where the remaining premises. And this was done through a number of mapping exercises. The last mapping exercise was done in the summer of 2019. And anybody in the orange area on the map there for Ruscommon is in what they call the intervention area, so they don't have access to high-speed broadband. So the blue areas are the commercial areas. So the commercial operators like Siro and Air and Virgin Media might be providing services in those locations. The green dots are actually the broadband access hubs that we have enabled last year in 2020 to try and get access to broadband for remote working and study. But anybody in the orange area has been identified as not having access to high-speed broadband. And if you feel that you should be on that list, but you're not currently, then you can email the government or the department by emailing broadband@gov.ie. Explain where you are, your air code address, and they will add you to the list. So the whole premise here is it's a contract for 25 years. No one will be left behind. So in other words, if you are not able to get high-speed broadband at the moment, you're on our list and we will be providing a solution to you. And if you're not on our list, you should be and you can request access. It's an ambitious plan. It's also a long plan. So this is a 25-year programme. So we're putting in infrastructure that will support broadband and the speeds, not just for now, not just for the next three to five years, but for 25 years. And actually, there's a 10-year extension to that programme at the end of it. What does it mean? What it means is we're delivering a high-speed solution, a high-speed broadband solution to 544,000 premises. So we're rolling fibre optic cable past all of those premises, which allows the customers, the end users, the farms, the businesses in those areas to order broadband from the service providers that are already in the market. So that's Air or Sky or Euronet or Lightnet. There's already 35 service providers that we have contracts with. And what does it mean? It means that we're going to run out, roll out probably about 142, 143,000 kilometres of cable. And we're going to use about 1.4 million poles. Most of them already exist, so we will use Air's infrastructure where it exists or Enet's infrastructure. We're also looking at using the ESP infrastructure, both overhead and underground. There's about 89,000 kilometres of it. At the moment, we believe will be overhead and about 15,000 kilometres underground. And again, why? Because as part of the state aid guidelines that underpins this contract, we need to use or reuse existing infrastructure. So there's no point in us digging a duct or a trench and putting a duct in if there's one that we can use on the other side of the road. So there's no point in us digging a duct or a trench and putting a duct in if there's one that we can use on the other side of the road. Likewise, there's no point in us pu- putting up another pole if there's a pole on the other side of the road that can be used by either Air or or ESP, as I say. I mentioned it's it's fibre to the home, so this is fibre optic cable directly into your premises. And that the minimum speed that we will be delivering to customers, both businesses and consumers over this is five hundred megabits day one. And and you can order a gigabit and businesses can actually order higher speeds. We're using fibre optic cable because it is a twenty-five-year contract. We have to provide a solution that matches the other solutions that will be available in the what they deem as the commercial area or the excluded area over the life of the contract. And and therefore, we're putting this in now. Once we roll out the fibre optic cable, the equipment at both ends, the the active equipment, as we call it, that's relatively quick and and cost-effective to swap out or to upgrade rather than the fibre optic cable itself. Uh, we're we're a wholesale-only service provider. So so what does that mean? We won't sell broadband directly to the individual customers. We will provide a wholesale service on a a non-discriminatory basis to all service providers that are uh in in the country at the moment. So as I say, we've already uh signed contracts with thirty-five. There's people already selling in the in the areas in Cavan and Carrigaline, which were the first areas to go live. And and as I mentioned before, it's inclusion, it's inclusive. So if you're not on our list and you can't get access to high-speed broadband, we will add you to our list. And if you build a new house um in um in an area that's in the intervention area, you can request to be connected to the to the network. Well, I'm before the pandemic started, I used to spend a bit of time on this slide. The we don't really need to spend any any time on this slide now. Everybody knows that you need high-speed broadband. People are, their education, it's it's all remote learning for schools. We're doing video calls as opposed to all being in um in the town hall. And health, you need to have a consultation with your doctor before you can even go to the GP surgery. So we're all well aware of how important broadband is. In terms of where we are of those five hundred and forty-four thousand premises, we've we've actually surveyed a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And we've, uh I I suppose a hundred and fifty-two thousand have actually been designed. And we've ramped up from this time last year, having approximately forty people in NBI. We're now at a hundred and ninety-five. So so we've grown rapidly. When we're also, our subcontractors have also expanded their crews. So there's over a thousand people at the moment working on the National Broadband Plan at the moment. And we've surveyed in all twenty-six counties. We're building and or started to build in all twenty-six counties. The last piece there, it's a seven-year programme. This would be year two. And we're trying to look at ways to expedite that. So so the first part of that is we've we've we kicked off the programme at the start of a pandemic. We've we were behind on surveys, we've got back on track. We were behind on designs, we've got back on track. We're we're looking at the build, we're we're getting back on track to where we expected to be in terms of build. The next step then is to 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 accelerate that programme. So the train has now left the station, we're on the tracks, it's now time to look at, okay, now how do we make this go faster? In terms of the process itself, we have the intervention area, the five hundred and forty-four thousand premises. We survey an area first and we we have people on the ground that that walk the roads, they they look at poles, they look at ducts. They also look at the premises that are 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 that they're passing. How are we going to get into a a premises if they placed an order? Would it be an underground connection or an overhead connection? Would we need to um to add additional poles on the customers' premises because their their driveway is 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 very long? So we look at all that and that that comes back into our design team and they they use all of that information to to come up with a detailed design for a particular area. Once we have that detailed design, that's effectively locked and loaded and it goes into our build programme. And we start to make routes ready. And one of the things we do that we're very active at the moment is actually doing hedge trimming and because we have to have that completed by the end of the month. Uh, we uh look at asking Air to replace any poles that we believe are defective. That so it's a pole on Air's network, but we believe it needs to be replaced uh because it's rotten or it's 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 close to collapsing or it's falling over. And once the build is complete, obviously, customers will um will start to place orders through their retail providers. While the build is going on, we will be on the ground in the areas, telling people about that it's coming and where they can get more information and hopefully stimulating as much demand as possible. A- and then obviously, when somebody places an order, we will go to site, we will run the fibre optic cable into their premises. The last thing we do before we leave the premises is we do what they call an internet speed test. And we confirm that whoever they chose as their internet uh service provider, that that service provider is honouring their commitment to provide high-speed broadband and that we are getting five hundred megabits down and fifty megabits up as a minimum service uh before we leave the premises, just to make sure everything's working. That's the areas where we're where we're working in. There's Ballina Slow is there. There's a lot of premises in in Ross Common being fed from the Ballina Slow area area. And then obviously, Ross Common, the the build is is underway there. So we we have our T-one licences applied, the the likes of Air and ENET have got T-two licences uh already applied for in in Ross Common to to get the work underway. And we would see people later in the summer getting connected um to high-speed broadband in Ross Common Town. And also Athlone is down there and Carrick and Shannon, both of those uh are going to feed premises into um into County Ross Common. I won't spend too much time on this, just that the orange dots and the green dots. The orange dots are what we call regional exchanges. They're the they're the ones we do first. And why, why is that? And that's because they already have access to high-speed broadband. So we can connect that directly to our high-speed backbone network because we have dark fibre capability from there all the way back to Dublin, which is is effectively where most of the the internet service providers um interconnect with ourselves. And we then connect from the the orange dots to the green dots. If if we started at the green dots, because we have no access to uh high-speed fibre at that location, we would have to build back. So it's it's equivalent of building a um a motorway, let's say, from uh from Ross Common Town to uh to Dublin. If we start at Ross Common Town and build, it'll take us the same amount of time to build to Dublin, but nobody can use it to get to Dublin until we get all the way there. If we move out and built it from Dublin out to Ross Common, and it means that as we pass additional towns, they can get access to uh to the high-speed motorway. And the similar type of of, I suppose, rules apply for for the the regional exchanges. And I won't spend much time on this. And the slides are there. As I say, we we do the regional exchanges first and then we build to the local exchanges. Okay, Ross Common. So when we look here, you'll see the the orange dots and the green dots again. I've I've highlighted the the fibre optic cable, which is yellow. That's what our network will look like when we've completed the build in Ross Common and County. So as I say, Ballina Slow and Ross Common are currently in build. And Athlone and Carrick and Shannon and Longford uh will be starting shortly. And as you can see, there there's premises that will be uh in County Ross Common that will be fed from those orange exchanges. We then go from the likes of um uh Ross Common, we build out towards Castle Re and or Castle Ray. Uh, so Castle Ray, we will build out to all of the premises around Castle Ray from there. And it's it's a big undertaking. There's about nineteen thousand premises currently in Ross Common County that don't have access to high-speed broadband. So that's about forty-nine percent. In in terms of percentage-wise, uh that's that's reasonably high. Uh, in terms of numbers, obviously, it's it's not as 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 big a number as, let's say, Cork, which has uh has um eighty thousand premises without access to high-speed broadband. But in terms of percentage-wise, that that's quite high. And the government will be investing as part of the programme. If we look at how much of of the investment or the the programme contract would be attributable to County Ross Common, it's about seventy-five million. Uh, that's just looking at the area. So as I say, we we do the orange areas and the red colour means that it's in build. The yellow colour means that we're surveying. And then, as you see, we build out from a a regional exchange and roughly about fifteen to twenty kilometres, and it depends on the number of premises and and the sort of the route the fibre takes. And we build out and then we build to the next exchange, one of those green dots. And we build all the premises out from that local exchange and then we move onwards. So you can see that roughly the number of premises um in County Ross Common associated with each of those and exchanges there on the left-hand side. We look at Ballina Slow, and that's just roughly what our network design looks like. So from a a high-level design, this is this is what we've we've seen, or sorry, designed, the designers have come up with. Now, we will pass premises in Ballina Slow that are already connected to high-speed broadband. We can't offer services to those customers because the this is state aid rules. And so, but we will pass those on the way out to all of the customers that are typically in the townlands around the county. And we will be taking orders for um for premises in Ballina Slow i- in June. Probably in May, we'll take what they call a pre-order, which means that you can then, you you can place an order with one of the service providers uh in May to be connected in the June timeframe. And then it depends roughly when we we finalize the bill. But it's it's a June-July timeframe for for Ballina Slow. For Ross Common, it's it's uh it's quite similar. And we'll be taking orders again in May, in likely to be June, that will take pre-orders. And then we'll be connecting in July, August and September. And and again, that's what the network looks like uh for for Ross Common. So roughly three thousand one hundred um premises in total, some of them not in Ross Common. So there's about two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three in Ross Common itself. Carrick and Shannon is similar. And as you can see, a different image here, and that's because this is a high-level design as opposed to a low-level design. So whilst the survey is complete, the people have, the the guys on the ground have walked the streets and the roads. Uh, but that hasn't been finalized into a detailed design. The next stage will be detailed design. And then what we do is we we start the build. So the pre-build work will start later in the summer. And and then there'll actually be, uh I suppose, uh the the ramp-up in terms of effort on the ground, as the the poles and the ducts have been replaced, we then move in and we start rolling out the fibre on those poles or adding our own poles, digging our own duct if required. And and we're looking at about this time next year for connections in in Carrick and Shannon. And then Athlone, something similar. Again, uh the detail, the the survey has been complete, but the detailed design and hasn't been signed off yet. And it's somewhere between June and March. In terms of the broadband connection points, part of the programme was to expedite um sites around the country to enable people where they didn't have access in their home to high-speed broadband, that they could go to one of these access hubs and either work remotely or study remotely, or just go and do whatever they had to do, whether it's it's moving and animals around and from from a farm perspective on the Department of Agriculture's website, or downloading or uploading a project for for college. And they could go there, do their work and 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 then go home again afterwards. We launched all of those um in in October or we the the first phase. So Minister Humphries and Minister Ryan there, Anne O'Leary from Vodafone is the retail service provider that's providing the the wifi equipment in the the hub itself. And there's Tara Collins, who is the the Chief Marketing Officer for for NBI on the left-hand side. And this was the first um the the first wave of of broadband connection points. If we look at Ross Common, uh the middle there, well, the on the left-hand side, you have all of the the access points, some of them green, some of them, some of them orange. The the ones that are orange are planned. And in the main, the the ones that are planned are now schools. So while we had access hubs identified initially, roughly around three hundred for for the whole country, and the ones for County Ross Common have gone live. So you'll see there and the only one that is still in the progress of being connected is Ballybay Community. Uh, so you've got Tulks, uh our Tulks, Digihub, um the Saint Patrick's Hall. Those access hubs are actually live now. The next phase and the department reviewed the list, Department of Communications reviewed the list late last year and agreed that all national schools should have access to high-speed broadband as as a priority. And therefore, we've taken the whole six hundred and ninety-five schools that that are in the intervention area that don't don't have access to high-speed broadband. And we're prioritizing those uh over this year and next. So the majority of those will be connected over over the next eighteen months or so. And you can see there's thirty-two schools in Ross Common uh that that are part of that. In terms of stakeholder engagement, well, we 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 talk to the broadband officers on a very regular basis. And you should use Anne Marie as as a source of knowledge. She she is. And and she knows quite a few people and interacts with quite a few people within NBI on a regular basis. So she can get you information. And we we also provide updates to the the county team, the roads, the planners. And I'm presenting to yourselves that the men and the members, the councillors. And in terms of the communities, we get our word out as we're building with using the PPMs. And we had obviously hoped to do uh live events such as town hall events, but these are now turning more into webinars. And as we as we get closer, we we try and deal with chambers of commerce as well with with the IFA, MoC and the Firma. And and it's it's all about making sure we get the word out. I should say that it's it's important that you tell your 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 constituents, NBI is a is a good source of information. And it's going to become a much better source of information. At the end of this week, we will be providing detailed information for every air code. So up until now, we've we've really only provided updates for people that were being connected within the ne- next eighteen months or so. Whereas at the end of this week, actually, it'll probably be over the weekend, uh that will actually provide you with information of for any air code in the country. So if you're, if you enter in an air code, it will tell you whether you are in the intervention area or not. If you're in the intervention area, it will give you an indicative date. And that's broken into uh whether if if your indicative data is within this year or next, you'll get a quarter, a three-month sort of window as to when we expect to you to be able to place a connection. If you're in further out, it may be a particular year. Now, what that means is obviously, it is a seven-year programme, which we're trying to bring it in. It means that people are going to get information where they may not be on the list until years four or five or six of the programme. And what I would say in those situations is that it's it's the same across the 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 country because we are building in every county in every year. So it's not as if we're prioritizing one county over another. And so this is really about, um and I suppose acknowledging where they are. And and I suppose I can give more information probably in six months' time after we've got it up and running and identified ways to uh expedite the the process and accelerate the latter years to make sure that they're they're provided with service as as quickly as possible. We have an email address for the public, which is there, contactus@nbi.ie. But for yourselves, we have reps@nbi.ie. So that's specifically for political representatives, representatives, so councillors and politicians. You can email that and and you'll get a response back from one of our team in in terms of any any of your local queries. And and of course, there's a telephone number there as well if they want to call us, and that's manned and and on Saturdays as well. So it's it's Monday to Saturday. And that is me. I will um I will stop sharing my screen now. Hopefully, um I think that provided you with a good update.
Thank you very much, Joe, for that. An excellent update, there's no doubt. Um, I have a range of people who want to ask you some questions. I would ask them all to be extremely brief uh because of the timeframe that's involved. I've just one myself because I need to answer the other one. You will be giving updates on the grey areas in the not-too-distant future as to what timeframe there is. I happen to be in the Corriboy grey area, so I'd be at the near the end, I presume. But at least there will be an opportunity to see what date it is in in this week or next week. And the other issue which I wanted information on was, if you're not on the list, just to take notes of those because we'll go to a number of councillors. The the question I want to ask is, why would I not be on the list? Should I be on the list unless it was newer? What's the reason I might be on the list? I I take brief questions from Fitzmaurice, Kew and Ward. Fitzmaurice.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Cahill look, and thank you, Joe, for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Cahill Look, and thank you, Joe, for the presentation. Very briefly, Joe, we all know that this national plan is costing 3 billion euros. And I suppose it's quite ambitious. So I suppose the bottom line for us here in County Roscommon is how many premises in the county will you have connected in one year? I'm very fortunate, I'm here in Castleery and I want to put out the message, we do have high speed fibre broadband here in the town thankfully. But I want to know exactly how many premises you will have connected in one year. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Kew.
Thanks Cahill Look and thanks, Joe, for the presentation there in relation to the national broadband. And just in relation to the, the Athlone area there. I live in the catchment area of, of Monksland, literally only a three quarters of a mile from the exchange, which is fibre enabled, which is a fibre exchange. And the speeds that we get, I'm, I'm with, with air are absolutely appalling. And, and the customer service with air is absolutely appalling. I've no telephone line with air since last September, despite the fact that I've met numerous complaints about it. I, I have to say, I, I've lost all faith in air as a, as a telecommunications company. And therefore, what is the, from the point of view of air's involvement? Where, where are things at in that respect? The, the quality, the standard of broadband has dropped significantly where I'm living.
Okay, councillor Ward.
Yeah, thanks very much, Cahill Look. Thanks, Joe, for your presentation. There's one thing there, Joe, that disappoints me. And I thought the whole idea of setting up NBI was that the people in rural areas would get a service and they wouldn't have to wait for a number of years. Now, I see from your presentation, I picked up on the fact that, again, rural Ireland and the rural exchange is going to be the last. They're going to, the, the people in rural Ireland is going to be the last people that will get the service from NBI. So what's the logic behind it? My understanding again, as I said, was that NBI was set up to look after all the pockets of rural areas in the country that wasn't included in the system up to now. And now that the fact that NBI were awarded a contract, again, the people in the rural areas are going to be left out of the loop until the very end. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Kelduff.
Thank you, Cahill Look. And just very briefly, and Joe, I want to thank you for the presentation, which was very comprehensive. And there's an issue around the county with telecom poles being in poor condition, but also located in areas that we'd say are not viable. You know, this might be, you know, when a road was changed or a development was created and a pole ends up being located where it shouldn't be. And I'd like to think that the new infrastructure that's been rolled out would not be placed on any pole that's not viable. And because if it is, we, like, it's been impossible to get these poles relocated up to now. And if broadband fibre or optic fibre goes on a pole that's not viable or in a location that's not viable, and then it'll be certainly far more difficult to get that and do much of it in the future. So I would like to think, obviously you've stated that you're assessing the poles and any rotten poles are being replaced, et cetera. But I'd also like to think that NBI would not place such critical infrastructure on a pole that's not viable. If you could just update me on that, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor, good enough, councillor Shanahan.
Cahill Look, just a question, Joe, in relation to a new build. At what stage should a person, if building a house or be the factory, at what stage should they contact you in relation to getting the broadband to the premises? Thank you.
Okay, councillor Callaghan.
Thank you, and thank you, Joe, for the presentation. And firstly, say, I concur a lot with what was said already in relation to the service providers. They're leaving a lot to be desired, particularly air have control of all the service in our immediate area. If they don't own, if they don't run the service, they have it rented out to other providers. Do I take it that, will, will those air exchanges be used from now on or are they going to be disbanded? The service where air have taken broadband into communities, they might go halfway down a road and they don't continue. What will be the outcome when the NBI come in? Will they, will they continue that service or will they, will they add on to it? Or will they, will they offer the customers that already have an air service? Will they be offering them an added on service? And I finally will say it has, where air are the most frustrating company. You could work with every consumer I meet. I had a young lady the other day, she had got a commitment from air last November where she was getting a connection of fibre broadband and there was going to be three poles put up. She now got word back the other day to say that it's not viable for them to put up the service. So they remember my questions, thank you.
Councillor Connerton. Councillor Connerton. On mute, on mute. Still on mute.
Thanks.
On mute.
Now, you can hear me now, can you?
Yeah.
Sorry, I had the phone off. Just to say, Joe, thanks for the presentation and the update. And I suppose it's good to see the rollout and lot of activity, particularly all around rural Ireland. It's a lot welcomed anyway, and the quicker it can be rolled out to every house, the better. And I've no doubt that you're doing a good job. Just one thing that came to, I got two phone calls over the weekend was while the hedge trimming is going ahead and all of that, at a quick rate before the, the, the date of first of March, and there is a few complaints where white thorn and black thorn is left out on the road and a number of occasions where some farmers, where the, where the excess hedges and all that have been cut have been put in on their lands without permission. It's not a major concern, but it's just maybe something that you could take back because it has happened on a road, just over the road from ourselves here. I can get further information should you require, but it was something that can just be addressed and mentioned maybe when it's, when you're cutting again in the back end of the year, that it could be addressed then. Thank you.
Councillor Crosby.
Sorry, Chair, Chairperson, councillor, Naughton, I think is sharing his, his screen.
Councillor Naughton, you're doing something you shouldn't be doing, it seems. Okay, councillor Crosby, can you come in in the meantime? Councillor Crosby, can we go to you? If not, I'd move to councillor Mc.
Hello.
Sorry, yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah. A, I'd just like to compliment Joe on the presentation. And a, just to ask two brief questions. One is in relation to how fast, what's the maximum speed that this broadband can deliver? And the other is, like, we're looking at a huge taxpayer investment of 3,000 million euro, 3 billion euro. And is there new technology that can possibly overtake this? And can this be redundant? Because like, as we all know, technology is moving at such a fast pace. For instance, satellite now, they're substantially updating the, the possibilities of delivering cheap broadband. So hopefully this investment like has a long term because like a lot of things we invested in the past, we found that they were redundant. All we have to do, look at our power station here close by to me in Lanesborough. There was 200 million invested in that only 10 or 11 years ago, and now it's redundant. So I think forward planning is very, very important with this sort of investment. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor McDermott.
Thank you, Cahill Look. I'd like to compliment Joe on his excellent presentation. And I've had this issue raised on numerous occasions with me in my own parish, particularly with a, a family ran business, like the Mary's Logistics there, they have a huge problem there with broadband. And I'd like to go back to what councillor John Kew mentioned there with air also. And they have a terrible experience with them and ongoing as it is at the moment. And I think it was an excellent point to John, councillor John Kew, I hope. And look, apart from that, that's all I can, I can.
Okay, good party, thank you very much. Councillor Tony Waldron.
Thank you, Cahill Look, and thank you, Joe, for the great presentation. I have a number of questions that I would like to raise, but I will do those through the reps email. It's very encouraging and in particular for counties like Roscommon, even in the pandemic that we're in here now. I think it's, it could be very attractive for businesses to location Roscommon. And if somebody is locating in Roscommon, it's great that you're going to give them some idea as to when they'll be able to connect up to fibre broadband. And in light of developments with regards to COVID-19, as there has been under discussion with government with regards to trying to fast track this out, and particularly out in the country where a lot of people want to live now and work. And there's more of an appreciation for the countryside. So I would like to think that the, the government and yourselves would engage with regards to trying to fast track this out to the country, in particular Roscommon. Thank you.
Okay, councillor John Naughton.
Thank you, Lawrence, I don't know what happened there earlier, apologies.
Fell off the wagon a few times, all right, yeah.
That'll do, that'll do. No, look, I just thanked Joe for his presentation. It was excellent and I think it's good to see significant progress being made. And hopefully over the next 12 to 18 months, we, we'll see a lot of homes connected in County Roscommon. And I think councillor Fitzmaurice has a question in that as to how many. You expect just, just an issue that has come up, Joe, and it's in relation to signage and broadband signage. There's quite a significant amount of it in South Roscommon referring to broadband coming to Galway. And it's, it is causing annoyance with people that maybe five or six miles into South Roscommon, you have signs up in a number of locations and announcing that the broadband is coming to Galway. And look, it's a positive thing, but I think we should at least know where the county boundaries are when, when we're rolling out the broadband and have the appropriate signs in the appropriate counties. Thank you.
Great, MP territory, yeah. Okay, I'll hand you back to Joe if you have some comments you want to make about what you heard and it will bring it to.
Sorry, Cahill Look.
Decision.
I had raised.
Sorry, did I miss a man in? Yeah, go ahead. Nigel.
Thank you, Cahill Look, thanks for your nice thing. Thank you, thanks, Joe, for your presentation. And just be very brief on this, I suppose it's very welcome. I think, you know, if people want to be working from a home and the way, I suppose this pandemic has played out, and a lot of people are working from home. And I suppose it's frustrating for them at times when they can't maybe log into their systems if they're maybe working from Dublin but working remotely, and it can be frustrating. And I know I've got a lot of reps on it and we're, you know, trying to maybe ring up air and trying to, you know, get information of them. And it is very, I think it's very frustrating for us as councillors and for the people that maybe are trying to, you know, bringing those tasks to maybe work on their behalf. So I think we need to have a little bit more situation where there's more, it's more hands on and that we can come back with information to the people that are frustrated. And yes, it's, it's very encouraging that it's going to happen and it's going to be rolled out and it is going to be very positive going forward. But I think we just need to get our house in order there to make sure that the people, that when they, you know, it's, it's very, very frustrating when people do try to ring and maybe they're left hanging on a line or maybe get no information at all. And sometimes even people are hung up on. And that is something that needs to be addressed, that everyone is treated fairly in, in, in society in regards to that. I leave it at that, but that's what something that I think that needs to be taken back to here. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Joe Murphy wants to come in as well. Councillor Joe Murphy.
Thank you very much, Cahill Look, can you hear me there?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Joe for his presentation as well. It's, it's very welcome and especially in the, what we've witnessed over the last 12 months as regards pandemic, pandemic. We see how important the broadband is. Welcome the, the, the schools that have been connected up. I'm just wondering, seeing as the present service providers that will be using this, does Joe envisage that there'll be any, that the price of, of broadband will, will come down? As seen as naturally enough, their customers, the, the amount of customers they have, they will go up and that NBI are providing the, the network. Does he envisage that, that the price of it will come down? Thank you.
Okay, and final comments before I let you away from the chief executive.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, you.
Yeah.
Sorry, Cahill Look, I, I beg your pardon. Joe, thank you very much for the presentation and indeed an opportunity for me to say that the approach of NBI is, is excellent and the way they're going about their business is, is a, is a model of, of the way it should be done. So I congratulate you on that. And insofar as we're, we're doing whatever we can here, we've great assistance here with Anne-Marie Johnson, as you know. We will be, I will be putting additional resources into it and in facilitating all aspects of it, including licensing, planning and road opening licenses and so on. So thank you for that, very encouraging and a job well done, Joe, thank you.
Okay, Joe, if you want to make any comments of what you heard and sum up, that's it. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, and thank you very much. And so councillor Fitzmaurice, how many will be done this year? In, in terms of the total number, it's probably close to 5,000. I, I know what we will be doing is we're, we're effectively looking at, if you think about it, three phases. So the first phase will be with, providing updates to people within, within the next two years. So between now and the very start of 2023. And of the 19,000 premises, there's about 11,000 will be done by, by that date. So that, that's, that, that's pretty good compared to other counties. And it, let me see, in terms of, yeah, working with air. And so, so the first thing, we have a very, very detailed contract with both Enet and air as suppliers. It's called an infrastructure access agreement. And so we have fairly strong SLAs in terms of replacing poles or giving us access to duct if it's with Enet or, or access to their colocation facilities. So we won't build new exchanges, we'll put our equipment in either Enet's existing exchanges or some of the smaller air exchanges because we don't need an awful lot of space because our equipment is, is very new. And, and from, from that perspective, we have a good working relationship with both of them at the moment, which is very positive. In terms of the, the retail side of air, I, I can't really comment. And what, what I can say is that we will be providing all retail service, service providers with, with a service. If people aren't happy with their retail provider, they will be able to move to a different retail provider on our network. So we won't be stopping anybody from changing from one to the other. And so if, if air is not providing you with a good service or Vodafone is not providing you or Euronet, you, you should be able to contact a new service provider and move your business elsewhere. In terms of our underlying service, we have a very, very stringent SLA with both, with the government and in terms of the number of faults that we repair, how long it takes us to repair faults. And, and there's very, very onerous penalties on NBI for not meeting that. So, so we're well motivated to make sure that we don't have customers that are without this crucial, crucial service for, for long periods of time. And councillor Ward, in terms of rural Ireland, everybody on our list has, doesn't have access to high speed broadband. And while we would like to, or I certainly would like to start at, at the edges and work in, it's not possible because we have to bring that vital infrastructure out to those areas. And, and how we're doing it is we're building out. The, the way our network design was done and, and I was in, involved in part of it was we had our technical team to say, here is the, the assets that you can use. So here is the, the Enet infrastructure and the air infrastructure. And I want you to go away and build the, the most effective build programme in as quick a time as possible, bearing in mind some constraints. And those constraints were how many poles and can we replace? How much duct can we get access to? How many T1 and T2 licences? How many T1 and T2 licences do we need to apply for? And all of that. And the only other caveat that was given is it has to be equitable. And what I mean by that is there's only so much work we can do every year. And so we see ourselves building between about 80,000 and 100,000 premises or passing 80,000 to 100,000 premises every year. It has to be equitable. In other words, it can't all be in County Cork or County Kerry or County Roscommon. It would be, it would be more efficient if we were to, if we were to go to a county and work with Eugene and his team and blitz a county and then move on to the next one. But I think there'd be an awful lot of people asking to be number one and very few people asking to be number 26. So we've done it as equitably as possible. So it does mean that there is premises that will not be passed until the latter phases of the programme. Unfortunately, that's the same in every county. Roscommon, because of how close it is to the number of regional exchanges, it actually fares reasonably well compared to other counties. In terms of telecoms and the poles, we use or we will get access to existing telecoms infrastructure. I think it's important that we have a local authority liaison team. And it's not just one individual, it's a team now that are working with Anne-Marie and with Eugene and his team to build out the infrastructure. We are using existing pole infrastructure. So if there are some of those poles that are either going to be replaced or should be replaced or are in the wrong, you know, in the wrong location, then we may be able to identify those and come up with alternative mechanisms for routing the fibre down that particular road. We are also going through our own, what they call S254 process. So we've worked with the county managers and the roads authority to come up with an agreed process that we will use across the country for applying for licences for standing new poles. So, and that is being rolled out as we speak. And it's very good and it takes into consideration some of the issues like health and safety because of the speed limits of a road and things like that. So we're working with the county councils to make sure that the infrastructure that we put in abides by those rules. In terms of adding on to the air 300 exchange, the air 300 fibre to the home rollout where it stopped halfway down a road, we can't really comment. We came up with a design to pass all of the premises that were on the list according to the Department of Communications after their mapping exercise. And we will get to all of them. It just will take us time to get to every single one. But we will get to it. Councillor Connaughton, the tree trimming, I'll take that back. That shouldn't be happening. We should be abiding by whatever rules are in place for tree trimming. But I'll take that away and make sure that the subcontractors are aware of that. Councillor Crosby, how fast? The minimum speed broadband product that we will deliver day one will be 500 megabits. So it's fairly, it's fairly fast. Now, I'm struggling on 28 megabits, which is very good compared to other people I know. But it's nowhere near that type of speed. It is a large project. It's, you mentioned the 3 billion figure, it's 2.6 billion plus VAT, but it's actually 2.14 billion plus a contingency pot. So the department applied for the maximum subsidy that this programme can take. So the maximum we can get is 2.6 plus VAT, which brings it up to just south of 3 billion euro. We see it as 2.14 because we're hoping that a lot of those risks don't happen and we won't have to dip into the contingency. On top of that, we and the department are also trying to actually do better than that. So any cost savings that we make, the department get a 60% clawback on. Any revenue over achievement my team gets, the government have a 60% clawback on that revenue as well. So we believe that it's, that the number will be less than that. I think everybody's hopeful there, but we're planning for the worst. And the worst is 2.6. If we don't hit that, or sorry, if we spend all that money and go back with our begging bowl, asking for more, we won't get any more. And there's step-in rights for the minister to take over the company if things like that happen. In terms of satellite, yeah, it's been talked about quite a lot. We've recently seen what the prices for the likes of Starlink, which is Elon Musk's satellite service, is going to be. It's 99 euro per month and it's 499 euro installation. And you're not guaranteed anything. So for instance, a number of the rural areas in America where they won contracts, something similar to the NBP, they're actually now at risk of not being able to provide the service that they've actually, that they were contracted to provide as part of that. And I think as part of the overall rollout, if we look at what the most of the developing nations are doing, any country that's rolling out high-speed broadband is rolling out fibre optic cable. Air is rolling out fibre optic cable to 1.4 million people in the urban areas. So by the time they finish and we finish, everybody will have access to fibre optic cable. Why? Because, well, that's the future. We've been living on copper wire since Alexander Graham Bell back in the 1800s. It can't deliver the high-speed service. Fibre optic cable is certainly going to be able to provide the services we need for the next 30, 40, 50 years. Why? Because we can change the lasers at both ends and increase the speeds. Councillor Norton, yeah, signage broad, that's a bit of an on-go there. Broadband coming to you or coming to Galway. Apologies about that. I think we already knew about those signs. We'll certainly take that away. And councillor Murphy, just in terms of this price for broadband, as I mentioned, we're going to provide the same wholesale price to all retail service providers. So what we expect to see is retail competition. So we do expect that people will be competing for your business and that once you're on our network, that you will be then able to swap very quickly and very easily from one retail operator to another, similar to what's happening with your electricity now, where you can go from Electric Ireland to SSE. And it doesn't mean anything changing, it's just effectively a different bill and a different phone number to ring if there's problems. I think that's everything. Did I miss any?
Thank you. You did very well. And fairness, we're very much over time at this stage. So I want to thank you very much, Joe, and your team for your presentation. And we look forward to broadband in the greatest possible speed.
Hello.
Thank you very much.
Carole, sorry, my councillor Shannon here.
Or Catherine, yeah?
Sorry, my signal dropped there for a few minutes. I just didn't get the reply. I just asked the question about a new build. At what stage should a person contact the company in relation to building a new house or premises?
So apologies. So, and that's a very good point. Sorry, apologies councillor Shannon. When a new build happens and there's an air code, that air code gets included in an update. So we do an update once a quarter with the Department of Communications. So they give us a list and we just confirm which premises are in or are not in the intervention area. What I would say is that they will be able to contact a service provider. We are looking at taking orders even before an air code is assigned to a premises. And if we know it's definitely in the Amber region and there's premises on both sides that are in our area, we'll start looking at doing a design for that premises straight away. What I would say is that on our website, there is, there is a section where we actually have outlined the duct infrastructure to be put in. So what we would recommend, and we're trying to get this out to local planning offices as well, is if somebody is doing a new build, if they're putting in infrastructure for water, for electricity, we would recommend that they put in a duct for fibre optic cable as well out to the boundary of the premises, that we can use that rather than going in overheads to the gable wall. And that's available on our website, but we're also talking about putting those leaflets in the local planning offices as well.
Thank you very much, Liam Perdas, or Joe. Wish you well in your work in the future. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And bear in mind that we have to come to a very rapid conclusion, this is because we're way over time. One issue that needs to be dealt with immediately and can't wait, and that's Part 15 Local Government Act. Sorry, the appointment of members to the LCDC. So I'll hand over to Patricia. Sorry, I'll hand over to Fiona for that. Fiona.
Thank you, councillor. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're fine, yeah.
Okay, just remember, this is ratification as our PPN members have served their six-year term on the LCDC. And the PPN themselves have gone out to election and ballots and three of their nominees are now back. Vincent Morn, Gerard Fallon and Michael Ewing. And we need the names ratified at our plenary meeting so that we can invite them to our next LCDC meeting on Wednesday. I just want to add in as well that we have a re-nominee from the Brussels Charity. Our member, Jola Healy, who has a very heavy workload at the moment, has requested that we would nominate another member from the Brothers of Charity. So with Murren Moyles, who is happy to come on the LCDC as the Brothers of Charity's representatives. And the letter came late Friday evening, so I wasn't able to circulate to you. But I would like to include that as well for ratification at the meeting today. Thank you.
Okay, do you need a proposal for Moyles, Ewing, Fallon and who was the third one?
Vincent Morn.
Vincent Morn. Can somebody propose?
Councillor Liam Callaghan.
I'd propose them. Councillor Liam Callaghan proposed, seconded by councillor Fitzmaurice. Okay. Agreed.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Agreed. Now, unfortunately, we haven't got near the end of the agenda, but we have to come to a conclusion due to COVID. We will look at a new structure maybe for the March meeting. But before that, I want to hand you back to the chief executive for ratification.
Thanks, Carole, and very conscious of the time as well. So just in relation to earlier, I said a section, you'll have to consider a section 159. It should actually be a 140 subpar paragraph nine, not a one, not a, not section nine of 150. It's section nine of the 140. And you might also like to consider section 112, while you're considering a direction to me at the next meeting. Thanks.
Okay, that's clear and agreed. Now, unfortunately, we have one more we need to do as well and we need to do it quickly. And that is item number six, rescinding of the residual disposal of land. Is that Martin?
Yes, Carole, just to say, it was, it was, the name of the purchaser was incorrect before, so to be rescinded. It's now got the name of the correct purchaser of those lands. It's the same lands that were approved before in November.
So you need just a proposal for that here from someone. Propose number six to rescind, proposed by Joe Murphy, seconded by Liam Callaghan. And propose number seven to reinstate, proposed by.
John Cummins.
John Cummins and seconded by Liam Callaghan.
I see.
Okay, that's agreed. And just I want to do item number five as well because it's of urgency and that's Liam's directorate. And that is the lease and buy court house. Liam, can you do a quick comment on that one?
Thanks, Carole. So essentially, we're revising the lease in terms of the annual cost and in terms of the length of it. So essentially, we're lengthening out the lease in order for leader funding to be drawn down in relation to it.
Okay, so that's a technicality, really. Somebody proposed that?
I'll propose that.
Proposed that by John Cummins, seconded by Valerie Byrne. That's agreed. Okay, folks, I need to stop with that.
Carole.
Yes.
Donal, councillor Kildof here. It would not be possible to just very briefly get the motions passed, very briefly, if that's at all possible. I'd appreciate it.
It's not really because we're gone, we're gone 15 minutes over time at this stage. We're gone 20 minutes over time. And because there are six of us here in the room, we would be certainly contravening the rules, as you know. So unfortunately, it's not done, I'm afraid. Okay?
Okay, Carole, thank you.
All right, right. Well, thank you all very much. Apologies, we didn't get to the end of the agenda. But we will relook at the method of which we're doing business for the March meeting and we may be able to extend the time, but we'll have to look at that before we go any further. Thank you very much. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.